Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 7th regular monthly meeting of the Danville City School Ward. You will notice that there are some slightly different looks up here at the front. And we hope that we're going to be able to go through this very cleanly using our new technology. We trust that you will find it helpful to have access through Board Docs off of the Danville Public Schools website from home or wherever you might be. And during the meeting, those here with us will have something called a scoreboard on the screen behind me so they can keep up with what we're trying to do. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order and we will ask for a roll call.
She'll be back.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Present.
Ms. Hall?
She's present.
Ms. Hughes?
Here.
Reverend Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Bolton?
Here.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Here.
All right, then we will move next to the approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion from Ms. Bolton with a second from Dr. Campbell to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Then we're going to vote both ways. By law, we have to give an oral vote, but we're also going to do it electronically. So when you're ready, please call the roll and enable the voting.
Okay. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes.
All the votes in?
We are waiting two more. Okay, Mr. Chairman, all the votes are in.
Thank you very much. We then move to our public hearing this evening relative to the proposed policy revisions that we started on a month ago. So I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Bryant, the Chair of the Policy Committee, to explain the public hearing and the process that we are going through. Ms. Bryant?
The public hearing is for anyone who wants to speak to the policy changes that have been posted. If you went to the school website, they were on the school website, and I think they were listed elsewhere, too. We went over them in the work session, I believe. No, at the last school board meeting. There aren't very many changes to Policy Section 6000, so I'm just going to briefly touch on the few changes that there are so that we can move on with tonight's program. Policy 6020.00, we added a cross-reference to the policy and regulation in Section 2000 for 2050.00 about school admission and tuition. Policy 6050.00, we just reworded for clarity some of the information. In 6100, we deleted in the section for legal references where it said State Board of Education. In 6140, we added a section about prohibition of solicitation and acceptance of gifts, and it was worded to match what the Virginia School Board Association has in their policy. In Policy 6150, there was no change to it, but in the regulation, we changed where it listed the reimbursement for mileage for staff for travel and put it in line with the federal and state amounts that are being used by also the city of Danville. Policy 6400, 6410, and 6510, there was a change in title from Director of Child Nutrition Services or something like that and to Child Nutritionist, I believe is what it was. And those are all the changes that were made, and most of them were just clerical-type changes. If anybody has any questions you want to ask, I will certainly try to answer them.
Public hearing is open. If you would care to speak to any of the policy revisions, this would be the time. Seeing none, then we will declare that the public hearing is concluded. The next step will be to keep it out on the website for further comments. It's still possible to comment by email or telephone until we meet in December, at which point we should be voting to approve all those policy changes. All right, we now move to the approval of minutes. We have several sets of minutes this evening for approval. The September 6th Board Retreat, the October 3 regular monthly meeting, the October 17th Discipline Meeting, and the October 18th Work Session. This is action for approval. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes as you stated.
Second. We have a motion from Ms. Hall with a second from Dr. Campbell to approve all of these minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? And I believe we are ready to enable the voting and call the roll.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Good.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, all of the votes are in.
Very good. Thank you. We now move to our recognitions this evening. The first one will be relative to the First Robotics Team and Mid-Atlantic Broadband. So I believe that we're going to invite members of our First Robotics Team leadership to come forward and explain what they are doing, and then invite the Mid-Atlantic Broadband folks to make a presentation. So we'll recognize Mr. Waters and his colleagues, Mr. Henderson.
Good evening. I'd like to, first of all, thank the board's support, the School Division's support, over the past 10 years, this is our 10th year, of having a robotics team at GW and Galileo. We are now the DPS First Robotics Team, which includes Galileo and GW. We're very excited to have representative from Mid-Atlantic Broadband again with us tonight. Last year, they started supporting our team with a donation of $6,000. That's kind of hard to say a little bit. And they are generously providing support to our program again this year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of Mid-Atlantic Broadband, I'd like to thank you for giving us time on tonight's agenda to come before the board. My name is Liz Smith, and I serve as a project manager for Mid-Atlantic Broadband located in South Austin. Mid-Atlantic Broadband's recently formed charitable arm offers us the chance to reinvest in the communities in which we serve, which is why I'm here tonight. Mid-Atlantic Broadband is proud to announce their commitment to sponsor the FRC Team in Southern Virginia for the 2014 season. NBC is honored for the opportunity to partner with the Virginia-based affiliate of FIRST, an international nonprofit mentoring organization that promotes a similar vision for students that are drawn to science and technology. The level of commitment from these students, teachers, and countless volunteers is breathing life back into STEM-based academia. Mid-Atlantic Broadband has been creating connections between technology and people to revitalize communities in Southern Virginia since 2004. NBC owns and operates a 1,600-plus mile fiber optic, open-access middle-mob network throughout Southern Virginia, which continues to support our primary mission of creating jobs by attracting new businesses to the region. As a nonprofit entity, NBC understands the importance of reinvesting in community programs. Our reason for being here today is in support of one of those programs. NBC is pleased to present a check in the amount of $6,000 to the George Washington High School Robotics Team to help offset the expenses for such a rewarding educational experience for the students of the city of Danville. NBC commends the efforts of everyone involved, and we would like to wish you luck at the regional competition.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We appreciate very much that continued support from Mid-Atlantic Broadband. Please go back and tell all of your folks how much we appreciate that. And we'd like to publicly thank our dedicated faculty who devote countless hours with these students working on the robotics program. We appreciate what you're doing, and we know that those young people do as well. Thank you all. Next item on our recognitions this evening is for Mr. Scott Brand of George Washington High School. Looking around the room, I have not spotted Scott. Is he here?
No, sir, he's not here tonight.
All right, then, Mr. Jackson, would you come to the podium, and I'll tell what I know, and you can fill in any blanks that you might have in his absence? We had invited Mr. Scott Brand to be here this evening. He is our automotive technology instructor at George Washington High School, has been for several years. And our program is now accredited by the National Automotive Technicians Education Foundation in the categories of maintenance and light repair. So the instructor and the staff are to be congratulated on meeting the quality standards of a national organization, which allows them to hang the ASE certification sign just like you would see at the automotive shops of the retail dealers around town.
That's correct.
Would you care to add anything to that?
It's a, we received a plaque on yesterday. It has the state of Virginia flag with the ASE seal in it. And Scott Brand and his team has worked hard the last 18 months doing the research, getting the proper documentations in line to receive the certification. The team came in, visited the school in October, and it was a success. And we'd like to thank our school board and our community for all your support.
Very good. We thank you. And please convey our thanks directly to Mr. Brand the next time you see him.
I surely will, first thing in the morning, sir.
And we'll give Mr. Brand a round of applause anyway. Next item on our agenda is a recognition. Ms. Beth Smith is going to do this one for us.
We are very excited to bring to you our new ESL teacher that we hired at, I believe, our first or second school board meeting. Ms. Al Tina Suber is with us, and I would like to bring her forward to be introduced to the school board. And Ms. Suber was our former teacher at Schoolfield Elementary, and now she has just joined the ESL team starting October 28. So she's been officially with us about two weeks now, and we're happy to have her with us. Okay? We also have other members of the ESL team that are here. Anna Fulton, Lisa Shelton, and Nellie Shea. And they also wanted to say something to you on behalf of the team.
We simply wanted to say thank you for proving a new teacher. We, as you know, we have worked very hard for the last few years, and the stakes get higher each year. We received news on Friday that we once again have exceeded all of our AMAOs and are very excited about that, but the addition of Ms. Suber, who will actually be able to serve almost on a daily basis every child that we have on our list. Whereas prior to having added her, we were putting on a lot of Band-Aids. And this gives us an opportunity to actually teach as opposed to put out fires, and we really, really do appreciate that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We appreciate so much everything that our relatively small staff in ESL does on a day-by-day basis with young people who are arriving here from all corners of the globe. It's amazing the number of languages that we have to deal with to try to help these young people get acclimated to English. And the work that is done by that staff and that we're counting on from Ms. Suber is just so very important for Danville Public Schools. Thank you all very much. All right, we now move to one of our annual recognitions. And for that, I've got a resolution here that is on our consent agenda later in the evening, but we're going to go ahead and read it now and then honor those who are in the audience for whom this resolution is intended. School Psychology Awareness Week. Whereas all children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supported, and receive an education that meets their individualized needs. And whereas schools can more effectively ensure that all students are ready and able to learn when they meet the needs of the whole child. And whereas children's mental health is directly linked to their learning and development, and the learning environment provides an optimal context to promote good mental health. And whereas sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention, and early intervention, and supporting culturally diverse student populations. And whereas school psychology has over 60 years of well-established, widely recognized, and highly effective practice, including being one of three substantive areas of psychological practice specified by the American Psychological Association. And whereas school psychologists are specially trained to deliver a continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to learning, enable teachers to teach, and students to learn. And whereas school psychologists facilitate collaboration to help parents and educators to identify and reduce risk factors, promote protective factors, create safe and caring schools, and access community resources. And whereas school psychologists are trained to assess student and school-based barriers to learning, utilize data-based decision-making, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and evaluate outcomes and improve accountability. Now therefore, the Danville School Board does hereby recognize November 11 through 15, 2013, as School Psychology Awareness Week, recognizing the vital role that school psychologists play in the personal and academic development of the children in the Danville Public Schools. Do we have our school psychologists here? I believe I see at least one back there. There are two, there are three. We thank you so much. Would any of the three of you like to speak this evening?
I think you said it well.
Thank you, sir. I think we had a little help. Some national group helped write this. All right, we now move to another recognition. It's the time of year for American Education Week. So we have another resolution here that will be on our consent agenda in just a few minutes, but we're going to read it now and recognize those about whom it is prepared. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they substitute educators, custodians, teachers, bus drivers, or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools encourage community, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Danville School Board does hereby proclaim November 18 through 22, 2013, as American Education Week. I would now like to invite anyone in our audience here who teaches, or drives a bus, or cleans buildings, or does administrative tasks, or anybody who simply holds a license as a teacher in the Commonwealth of Virginia, to please stand up and be recognized.
He said that for me.
We thank you each and every one, and we trust that you will find creative ways in your setting to celebrate during the week of November 18 through 22. Not that that's the only week that we should be celebrating American education, but it's a week that we intend to pause and make certain that we do so. Thank you all very much. We now move to a presentation related to the Virginia School Boards Association. And this presentation will be made by our superintendent, Dr. Edward Newsom.
Thank you, Dr. Paul Hamus. The VSBA Board of Directors encourages participation in the VSBA Academy. The Academy provides opportunities for board members and superintendents to become further educated in boardmanship, skills, and curriculum issues. These opportunities, which you have all taken advantage of, further assist you in your role in assuring a local control over our public schools and that Danville Public Schools continue to provide high-quality education for over 6,000 students who depend on each of us every day. The members of the Danville School Board are strong advocates for our teachers and students. Your commitment and dedication to your roles is evident in the ways and today that we formally recognize you for your participation in the VSBA Academy. The awards that I will issue tonight are to Ms. Terry Hall, Achievement; Mrs. Cheryl Bryant, Excellence; Philip Campbell, Excellence; Dr. Paul Hamus, Honor, which is gold; Ms. Rebecca Bolden, Distinction; and Mr. George Wilson, Distinction. Let's give our important members a hand.
So, thank you very much. Let's give my hand again.
I'd like to commend my colleagues for their faithfulness in trying to keep up-to-date with the latest trends in public education by working through the Virginia School Boards Association. It's a wonderful organization that serves us in so many different ways, and we're glad to be able to participate. And for those who received that starfish pin, if you've never heard the story that goes behind the starfish pin, you need to ask about it. It's just a perfect story that illustrates why everyday citizens would be willing to devote the kind of time and effort needed to serve on this board for virtually no pay and not a whole lot of thanks at times. So I commend every one of my colleagues for their involvement. We now move on our agenda to the public comments area. We do have one individual who signed up to speak this evening, and that is not a requirement, but I will allow her to go first since she signed up, while the rest of you think about whether you would like to also speak this evening. So, Ms. Beverly Abbott, please come forward.
Thank you. Dr. Newsom, Dr. Paul Hamus, members of the school board and other staff. I'm speaking, Beverly Abbott, speaking as president of the Danville Education Association as well as as an individual. I believe it was a year ago I presented to the school board a resolution about high-stakes testing, asking for your support on that. Needless to say, at that time, I was a little upset at the fact that nothing had been done. And then Dr. Paul Hamus emailed regarding two meetings that he was going to be having at two different schools and asking for people to come, and I thought it was just an information-type thing. So I go to the meeting, and we actually worked as a collaborative group, principals, teachers, Dr. Paul Hamus, and others, to draft a resolution for high-stakes testing. He did have the document that I had presented last year, as well as one that the Virginia School Board Association had drafted. We used those to put together a document that I feel expresses the concerns of everyone in our field, and I do hope that you all will take this into consideration and vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Appreciate you speaking, and I appreciate the help that you provided during those sessions. Anyone else care to speak to the board this evening? Then I believe we will close our public comments section and move on. The next item in our agenda would be the consent items. There are four consent items this evening. The resolution regarding American Education Week, the resolution on School Psychology Awareness Week, a set of tuition applications, and a set of disciplinary hearing panel recommendations. This is action for the entire consent agenda listing. So what is your pleasure?
I, first of all, would like to ask that the recommendation from the disciplinary hearing panel, number 2014.023, be pulled out.
023 are the last digits on that one. That one will be pulled from our consent agenda. Any other requests? Reverend Wilson?
Just further, case number ending 0.6, 01016 be pulled, please.
016. All right, are there others that anyone wishes to pull from consent? All right, then a motion to approve consent with the exception of those two discipline cases would be appropriate at this time.
So move to here.
We have a motion from Reverend Wilson?
Second.
With a second from Ms. Hughes to approve the remaining consent items. Is there any discussion on that?
Hughes, can you repeat the second motion, please?
The motion is to approve the consent items with the exception of discipline cases 2014.023 and 2014.016.
And who seconded the motion, please?
The second was from Ms. Hughes.
Okay. And who made the motion?
Reverend Wilson.
Okay.
Okay. Voting lines are open.
All right. Is there any -- have we already called for discussion?
Yes.
We did? Okay. Then you may vote online, and if you will call the roll, please.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes. For those of you wondering on the technology here, what happens then in board docs when we approve a whole collection of items? They've really set it up beautifully. If you want to just click quickly on any of the other three items down there, you will see that it automatically brought that motion over and shows the vote and everything on each of the items. So that's very helpful.
Mr. Chairman, all of the votes are in.
All the votes are in. Then I believe we can proceed. Did we vote aloud?
Yes.
I'm losing track of things, folks. All right. I believe we next move to an action item from Human Resources, a set of personnel recommendations. And that should be Dr. Jennings. Please come tell us what we've got.
Thank you, Dr. Paul Hamus, and good evening, everyone. The Department of Human Resources has prepared for your review and hopefully your approval this evening five personnel recommendations. And I'll just point out a couple of things for a few of the cases. The case ending in 01, I want you to be aware that this particular position has not been vacant all year. There was someone there who decided to resign and take a position elsewhere, and we were able to find someone to step in and fill in that position, and they're doing a great job there. The second case, we really hated to lose this young lady, but she actually had gone back to college and obtained a bachelor's degree and went on to get a job in her field. So we're proud of her, though we hated to lose her. The other two, the next ones ending in 03 and 04, again, these folks were in place during the particular season. They are coming to you for approval because we only recently received all the verifications we needed before we could bring them to you for actual selection and hiring and that sort of thing. Also, our coaches are paid at the end of the season, so no one's lost any money. In essence, it's they need to actually perform the job before we pay them for the job. And lastly, the case ending in 05, while we have a resignation, the individual did not actually give a reason. And I know typically you like to know why someone is leaving, but she did not give a reason.
Are there questions relative to the five personnel cases that have been presented? I would like to ask, on that fifth case, has that season already begun, or is it?
No, it's not begun.
So it's a winter sport, right?
It is.
Okay.
And we are already searching for coaches for the winter sports, as well as getting a head start on next fall.
Any other questions for Dr. Jennings? And this is an action item for approval. What is your pleasure?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that the recommendation be approved.
Second.
Motion with a second to approve the recommendation. Motion from Reverend Wilson with a second from Ms. Hall. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve these recommendations? Then seeing none, I believe we are ready to enable the online voting, and then call the roll, please.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, all of the votes are in.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, Dr. Jennings. We now move down to action items from the School Board itself. First one, item 10.1, instructions to the delegate for the VSBA General Assembly. At our work session, we had it on for action initially, and then we postponed action because we were running pretty late that morning. The attachment that you had then, which I believe you also have again tonight, yes, you do, is from the pack that is sent out to the delegate from each school division by the VSBA staff ahead of time before arrival in Williamsburg. And on those 10 pages, there are several proposed revisions to the VSBA legislative positions that will be determined by the delegate at the delegate assembly on Thursday afternoon of the convention. What we are asking is whether you would like to give any specific instructions to the delegate and alternate on one or more of the items, or whether you want to give more blanket flexibility. Simply asking your preference so that the delegate or alternate can represent the full board. What is your pleasure?
I think we'll leave it up to you, the delegate. I don't have any specific instructions.
All right. Well, this is listed as an action item. We could simply take no action, and I guess that would make it possible for the delegate to do anything he wants, or the...
Silence, I think, gives that permission to both your own conscience.
It certainly sounds like it. So if that's the intent of the board?
That's my intent.
We'll accept that. We appreciate you at least looking to see if there was anything that might be something you feel really passionate about. All right. So we'll move forward with that with no action taken, with the implicit instruction to the delegate to do what he thinks best. That then brings us to item 10.2. If I can get my finger to work right here. There we go. 10.2 this evening is the resolution to which Beverly Abbott spoke during the public comments. And if I can get this thing to come up. There we go. I will read this. As she indicated, this is really a compilation of ideas that came to us from several sources. The initial primary source was from the Danville Education Association, and when I did some online looking at theirs, did a little search, I found that it is part of a national movement. So it's being considered in all 50 of the states. And the second primary resource that we received was through the Virginia School Boards Association, and they had actually been working with the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, along with some other organizations in Virginia related to public schools, to pull together a resolution about high-stakes testing that has much more of a Virginia-specific tone to it. And then I think some of our best resources on this topic were those individuals who volunteered to meet with me a couple of weeks ago after school, to sit down with those two documents, pick out the best parts, grab some key phrases, and then supplement that with their own ideas. I was pleased to have Ms. Hughes at one of those events, and she can attest to the passion that those educators were putting into the endeavor. And I believe that with their help, we have come up with a resolution that really does speak to the kinds of issues that we are all concerned with. So I will now read that for the sake of our audience, and then we will take action. Whereas, our nation's future well-being relies on a high-quality public education system that prepares all students for college, careers, citizenship, lifelong learning, and strengthens the nation's social and economic well-being. And whereas the overemphasis on standardized testing has caused considerable collateral damage in too many schools, including narrowing the curriculum, teaching to the test, reducing love of learning, pushing students out of school, driving excellent teachers out of the profession, and undermining school climate. And whereas an overemphasis on standardized testing at the elementary level has created a destructive pass-fail culture wherein students as young as third grade become convinced that they are academically deficient based on SOL scores. And these expectations of failure become entrenched and are incredibly difficult for future educators to reverse. And whereas high-stakes standardized testing has negative effects for students from all backgrounds, and especially for low-income students, English-language learners, children of color, and those with disabilities. And whereas the overreliance on high-stakes standardized testing in state and federal accountability systems is undermining educational quality and equity in U.S. public schools by hampering educators' efforts to make progress toward a world-class, student-centered education system that promotes the critical thinking, innovation, creativity, problem-solving, collaboration, communication, and deep subject matter knowledge that will allow students to thrive in a democracy and an increasingly global society and economy. And whereas statewide testing in Virginia labels students, teachers, and schools as failures based on a narrow and shallow test that primarily tests a student's ability to read rather than addressing the various areas of multi-intelligence, such as mechanical aptitude, the arts, languages, higher mathematics, and technology. And whereas the culture and structure of the systems in which students learn must change in order to foster engaging school experiences that promote joy in learning, depth of thought, and breadth of knowledge for students. And whereas we do not oppose accountability in public schools, but believe that the system of the past will not prepare our students to lead in the future, and neither will the standardized tests that so dominate their instructional time and block our ability to make progress toward a world-class education system of student-centered schools and future-ready students. And whereas our vision is for all students to be engaged in more meaningful learning activities that cultivate their unique individual talents, to provide options for students that are designed to respect how they learn best, and to embrace the concept that students can be both consumers and creators of knowledge. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Danville Public Schools calls on the Governor, the General Assembly, the Virginia Board of Education, and the Virginia Department of Education to reexamine public school accountability systems and to develop a system based on multiple forms of assessment, which does not require extensive standardized testing, more accurately reflects the broad range of student learning, and is used to support students and improve schools. And be it further resolved that we call on the U.S. Congress and administration to overhaul the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, reduce the testing mandates, promote multiple forms of evidence of student learning and school quality and accountability, and not mandate any fixed rule for the use of student test scores in evaluating educators. And be it further resolved that we encourage the General Assembly to improve the current accountability system so that it reflects greater validity, uses more cost-efficient sampling techniques and other external evaluation arrangements, allows for expedited test retakes, more accurately reflects what students know, appreciate, and can do in terms of the rigorous standards essential to their success, and nurtures the sense of inquiry and love of learning in all students. And be it finally resolved that professional K-12 educators be integrally involved in the design, development, and determination of appropriate assessment mechanisms and tools for students, with a minimum of standardized testing in the elementary grades where students are just beginning to appreciate what their learning can do for their future and for the future of our community. That is the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this resolution and support it fully.
A second.
We have a motion from Ms. Bryant with a second from Ms. Hall to approve this resolution and support it fully. Is there any discussion on that motion? Then I believe you may enable the online voting, and then call the roll when you're ready.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, all of the votes are in.
Very good. And did I hear correctly that that was unanimous?
Yes.
Yes. I appreciate the support of everyone here around the table, and I appreciate those who provided input to this, and I trust that everyone in this audience and everyone in the community will understand why we're doing this and will give us some encouragement to take the next steps to get it into the hands of the right people who can make a difference on our behalf. Thank you all. I believe that we are now ready for the closing roll call. Have I missed anything in this process? Is that where we are?
Yes, sir.
All right. Then I believe we traditionally start with our attorney.
I don't have any comments.
All right. And now, Dr. Newsom.
Well, last week at Galileo High School, students had an opportunity to open the credit union. And so I want to commend, first, all of our business partners, and especially our students, for taking a leadership role and putting themselves in a place for 21st century thinking and understanding how financial literacy will move them in a place where they can be successful. I want to congratulate the Galileo staff, all of our business partners, especially the students and teachers who made this possible.
Very good. We now call the roll of the board members.
Ms. Bryant?
I just want to thank everybody in attendance tonight. I want to thank all of the educators who are still in the classroom making such a difference. We so appreciate that. And I want to thank my colleagues for everything that they do to assist our school, staff, and faculty, and all of the staff here at the central office. We do appreciate everything that's being done, and congratulations to the first robotics team. I'm excited for them.
Dr. Campbell?
I was thinking tonight, say, in regard to closing comments, and many times we get so caught up into all of the things that we have to do: teachers, principals, superintendent of the board. And sometimes I think we miss the opportunity, sometimes just to be thankful of the things that we have. And so in this month of thankfulness, I hope that for each and every one of us, we will be thankful for things being as well as they are. And I used to hear for so many years, "Count your blessings," because if we do that, I think that we will be at a point where we will enjoy this wonderful month that is considered to be a thankful one. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Hall?
I would like to thank Mid-Atlantic Broadband for their generous contribution, and Liz Smith for speaking here... Smith for speaking here tonight. That donation or contribution to that is very much appreciated by Danville Public Schools. I'd like to also congratulate Scott Brand for earning the ASE certification, and welcome Altina Sueberg, our new E L F teacher, and certainly all of our educators who are here tonight and who are not. Thank you for all your hard work. I also want to share what a great time we had today at Forest Hills Elementary School. Congressman Hurt came, and the children put on just a wonderful program. It was so special, and congratulate Mrs. Lassiter and her great faculty and all those wonderful students. It was a great day for Danville Public Schools today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Hughes?
I'd just like to echo all the congratulations and all the sentiments that my fellow board members have stated tonight. I think the one thing that I did get out of going to the meeting that I went to about drafting the resolution was the fact that there is so much passion among our teachers. And I sort of got a little ramped up myself, because, like I said, my mother taught school for 42 years, and I sort of have a little of it in my blood. And I remember thinking back to when I had gone to some career days at schools, and I had taken my balances and things from work or whatever, and let the kids practice weighing things or whatever. And there were times when I said, no, that's less than that, or that's more than whatever. And I would see it when a little light would go off in their head when they finally got it, and I would get so excited, I'd get a little charge or whatever, and I said, hmm. And so I called a friend of mine after I got back, and I said, that thing, that sort of charge, that little yes, that I sort of felt, when that kid finally got it and that light went on, I said, is that what teachers feel like all the time when they see those lights go on in those kids' eyes? And they said, yeah, that's what it feels like, when the children finally get it, when their students get it. And I said, wow. I said, that's why they go into the classroom every day. It must not be because of the money. I always know it's not for the money. It's for that charge that they get when the lights go on. And the idea that you don't really get those lights going on all the time when you're just teaching for a test, and the kids can regurgitate the answer to the test, that kind of makes you sad. And so I know that it seemed like a good idea to somebody somewhere about trying to make sure that no child got left behind, but something else got left behind, and I think it's the joy of learning. So I think it is a good thing that we're going to be able to hopefully try to get back to the basics and the joy of learning in the classroom.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes, I concur, and it's been said, and to echo one thing, I noticed at the affair at Forest Hills afternoon, the news media was there and was broadcast, and we really appreciate that, because there are so many things happened, has happened in this hour division, and we don't get that press. We get the big things, or little things, whatever you call them. We get more of these things, and it'll be better for everybody. And relative to this high-stake testing, I'm so glad I'm, this is headed in the right direction, because behind the scenes, it's where everywhere I went, people talking about this, but no one, you know, took the step to do it. I'm so glad of this, and I'm sure this will pick up momentum, because within this division and out of this division, we hear complaints about what's not taking place because of these testing. And I'm so glad this is taking place. And once again, not only here in Danville, but as I move across, especially in the state of Virginia, there are great complaints about what is taking place or not taking place because of these other tests. And we congratulate all persons who have the right mind to do what needs to be done.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I want to thank our school psychologists for being here tonight and all the wonderful things that you do. We couldn't manage without you. And also Scott Brand and the robotics team. Those are two great things going on at GW. I also was in attendance at Forest Hills today, and it was, the program was just amazing. I hope that gets a picture in the paper. Y'all can see these little kids with these flags on. I mean, and the way they sang and performed, it was just wonderful to see and to have Congressman Hurt there to recognize that school for the tremendous job they've done. I was very proud to be there. Thank you.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
I agree with all of the very fine things that my colleagues have said here in their comments, and I just want to reiterate that we do know there are some absolutely wonderful things happening in classrooms, and libraries, and music rooms, cafeterias, all across this system every day. And we don't always get the opportunity to thank every individual that makes those wonderful things happen, but we do feel the appreciation. And we will try, whenever we see, to remind you how much we do value everything that everyone is doing for these young people. We thank you for your attendance here tonight, or for watching this on video replay, and I believe we are now at a point that we can take a recess, maybe 10 minutes?
I move this meeting of the School Board of the City of Danville, Virginia, to be recessed for 10 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion to recess for 10 minutes from Ms. Bolton with a second from Ms. Hughes. So, when you're ready, we may enable the voting.
The voting is enabled.
Where is it?
Where is it?
Mr. Chairman, all of the votes are in. It's unanimous.
Did we hear it out loud?
No.
You do need to call the roll.
Okay. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes. So we're going to take about 10 minutes. Thanks for coming out tonight.